All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 2:00 PM on August the 9th of 2022. City Council is convening at this time in work session regarding items for presentation and discussion. Specifically today, we are here to further discuss the proposed 2223 operating budget and capital program, discuss funds of the city, including but not limited to the general fund, debt service fund, so forth and so on, and take action to direct the city manager to make changes or any action to the budget. So just moving forward, the plan at this time is we will be in work session for discussion of the budget, and then we will move to executive session to discuss some personnel matters. Once we are done in executive session, we will come back out to begin our regular agenda. And when we are completed with the regular agenda, we would then have a special meeting tonight that will begin at 5:30, and that is specifically to discuss further the street and road bond package. So that gives you a little idea of where we're going. We're not exactly sure how long we will be, but that will give you a brief roadmap. But first, we're in work session. We are here to discuss the budget. Mr. Atkinson, at this time, I will turn it over to you to further go through some discussions we've had over the last week.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, we should now have up on the screens. I thought what I would do is start by responding to some inquiries, some questions that I've had, the ones that we've been able to work through over the last week. I'll present those concepts and ideas. Council, take any questions on this item, and then if there's any further discussion, we can look at that as well. So following your work sessions last week, and again, I've said it before, but thank you for all the time and the effort that you put into that. Been requested that I present some suggestions, some concepts. What would the change be to the budget if instead of where we stand today, which is the 48.3230 pennies, we instead looked at the no new revenue rate? So again, the no new revenue rate is what we probably all are used to calling the effective rate, and it is that tax rate that in general, in fact, maybe say on average, will produce the same amount of revenue on the same properties from the prior year. Some of this will get a little crazy when we get into it, but it's no more crazy than what we looked at last Monday and last Tuesday. So with the question being, what would it look like? The answer to that is largely on this slide. So your maintenance and operation tax rate would come down the equivalent of, let's call it $1.25 million. To make that up, would offer the following suggestions. First, if we were to increase the projection that we showed you last week on annual sales tax by one-half of 1%, that would produce $433,019. Would also suggest, we did have 18 months of insurance, and we spent a lot of time talking about that. 12 months is normal, 6 months is trying to realign our renewal rates. That extra 6 months really is a one-time expense, and if the council chooses, it's very appropriate to use your reserve funds for that 6 months. Notice that 409,000, that is less than what you saw as the 6 months. This is the part for the general fund, so the rest of it stays where it is. That carries us down to looking at about $406,000. One item would suggest is to reduce the fees, the budgeted fees, so think of this as an expense for the credit cards that we process. This is 75% reduction, not 100, and that's because if you choose to do this, we can't implement it prior to January the 1st. So 3/4 of the year, 3/4 of the deal. So that's an expense savings there. Council, I can identify up to eight vacant positions that are perennially vacant positions. That would be four inside of your street department, four inside of the parks department. They are not occupied at this time, so you're not reducing a service. My sincere hope on that was if this is the route we go, that I get to come back in a few months and say, wow, we filled all the rest of them up, maybe we could ask for these back. But that's what I would put there. That is a full-end cost savings for those eight positions. So that's your salary, your benefits, and all of that. Note that I have a line item on there, increase to the LPD compensation adjustment plan. I made some mistakes at the top end of that chart. This remedies that. That would balance out, so 406,000 needed, 406 provided. The one other item, and it's not shown here because it's technically in a special revenue fund. When y'all asked the question last week, you know, what was the difference? It was 1.357 million, and I'm showing you something slightly less here. The difference is the part that's attached to the economic development tax rate. So the equivalent reduction there is approximately $108,590, and that makes it all go back square again. And that information has been shared with Market Lubbock as well. Questions on these numbers, and I'll start showing you the impact on the next couple of slides.
Ms. Joy.
If you give me that number again on the decrease to LEDA?
It would be to Market Lubbock.
Market Lubbock, okay.
And it's in the approximate amount of $108,560.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. So let's go back to our, I'm sorry, Mayor, was there another question?
I don't believe so for that slide. Thank you, sir.
So let's go back to that standard language slide that we walked through last week. This is updated to reflect the impact of a no new revenue rate. The required language will still say this budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 3.4 million, or 3.52%. Of that amount, of the 3.407 million, 2.93 million is to be tax revenue raised from the new property. The difference between those numbers is roughly $500,000, and the following slides will pick that back up and show it to you. So the tax rate at no new revenue would be 47.6762 cents. You see the voter approval rate underneath that. Obviously, we are well underneath it. You see the quote unused increment. That is accumulated by councils in every year in which you do not go to the 3.5%. The difference between what you did and 3.5% of revenue carries over, and it's available for future use. If you add that to the voter approval rate, the published number is 49.25 cents. Proposed rate, if the council chooses to go this route, will be the 47.6762 cents. You will add to your unused increment. You're not taking it, you're not using it, but you would add to that for the future. You see the value, we're required to quote the estimated value of the unused increment. It's there below. Again, that is not a number that you're assessing, it's part of it. The rest of these numbers are largely the same. Reminder that the taxable value of the city did rise very substantially, 23.6 billion. Let's go to the next. Just as we showed last week, we show again under no new revenue rate calculations. You see the 3.407 matching the prior slide, and the division of where it goes and from which category, new property or existing property, the revenue is derived. So these, all in, adjusted by the 1.258. Go to the next. Here's the exciting thing about how these calculations work, I'll say that tongue-in-cheek. By adopting the no new revenue rate, the average single-family home will see an increase of $27.72. Last week, that number was a little over $40. Why does the no new revenue rate raise taxes? It does that because it is calculated on total revenue across the entirety of the property. Not everybody's single-family home will go up by that amount, some will go down. By law, you, the council, do not assess individual properties, you assess in the total. And so you factor in commercial, some of the various tax exemptions, this is really where you end up. Going back to the comparative, last week, you had 15 cities in the comparative, you have 10 now. We didn't forget the other five. These 10, including us, are ones that have announced their proposed tax rate, so we're just able to lay them side by side. You do see that this slide accounts for the no new revenue rate for Lubbock. Mayor, Council, that's the presentation in response to those questions, and be glad to visit or answer anything that I could.
Mr. Massengo.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, of this slide that you have up right now, how many of those other cities have proposed the no new revenue tax rate?
I believe McKinney. Can go back and check that, but I believe McKinney has.
And did we get this presentation prior to the meeting?
We did not. We've been trying to finish it this morning.
Will you go back some slides?
Absolutely.
Go, let's go back to that change in sales tax revenue.
There you go.
So how can we justify a budget increase to sales tax, the sales tax projection?
It's still going to keep us within what appears to be reasonable today. It's an excellent line of thought and discussion, because as we've told councils previously, if things change quickly, it will always be your sales tax. It will go up quick, or it will go down quick. It's also the one to which we would have to develop a response if it came to that.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy.
This tax rate, what are we looking, we can't just look at this year, we have to look going forward. So what happens next year in terms of expenses that we really, at this point in time, don't have the resources to pay?
Expenses this year that we don't, expenses next year.
Next year.
Certainly, council's well aware that one of the more exciting things that will happen next year is we will open Fire Station 20. It is the next new, that was funded by the prior council. We've been in the process of acquiring some of the equipment for that. As you begin next year's budget, we will need to add 15 firefighters to staff that station.
At what cost?
Approximately $2 million.
Is that the only personnel that we will have to staff in Fire Station 20?
To my knowledge, yes.
In future years?
In future years. Fire Station 20 is being built to be what's known as a multi-company station, so you open it with one, and the associated firefighters and officers it takes to run that. When you add the second company, which is the next set of equipment, you also add an equivalent number of firefighters and fire officers as well.
So you'll have another company of 15, is that correct?
That is.
And approximately what year will that happen?
Chief Foderson, is that FY '26 for the second company?
Good afternoon. Yes, sir, we discussed '26 or '27, depending on conditions.
Depending on growth in the area.
Correct.
All of the materials that we had during budget were prefaced with the fact that we are in uncertain times, is that correct?
That is.
Those uncertainties include sales tax, correct? Might they also include a reduction in property values?
That's, there's very little that is ever predicted on property tax change. A guess would be that you will not see the property tax increases that you've seen this year. I'm not aware of a time in our history that there's been any significant reduction. We came out through the pandemic year, the immediate following year, and it was very minimal increase, but there was an increase even through that year.
But all of our general fund, it's made up of property taxes and sales tax, correct?
The two largest components, yes.
All right. Have you changed your opinion that we're in very kind of uncertain times?
I have not.
Okay.
Ms. Joy's good for right now. Mr. Atkinson, I would say that uncertain times apply not just to us, but also to taxpayers, et cetera, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's across the board, we're all in uncertain times.
It is, and if I might expand just a slight bit on the deal, again, sales tax is what changes quickly. I think if we see much of a negative shift in that, I expect to also see a negative shift in expense. They will not be one-for-one, they won't zero out. But if one goes down, I fully expect the other to go down as well, and there's somewhat recent historical precedent for that.
So if we look at our expenses, if things do go into uncertain times as we head into, our expenses could drop to where we would be just fine with the no new revenue rate?
That, yes, and we can force expenses to drop if we need to.
As far as the reduction in vacant positions, you said perennial, those are perennial vacancies. So again, if we cross the bridge where we are able to fill those vacancies, we can look at that as something later, at the same time address the reduction in cost to this budget. Would you agree that this year particularly saw a drastic increase in the appraised values that we saw across the county?
Yes.
And we, again, we can't anticipate what that would look like next year because we don't control that. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
But at the same time, do we anticipate that that would be something that we would see to that drastic extent this next year?
I would not expect that.
Mr. McRae?
Jarrett, would you tell me where else, other than these particular areas, that you looked at to try to find some cost savings, or did you limit yourself just to these areas?
We ran some analyses to see what impact you might have on the proposals we have for employee compensation across both civil service and non-civil service. The numbers can be reduced there to make up an equivalent amount across the board. I choose not to present that, certainly if the council directs me to, I'll be glad to, but choose not to recommend that. Staffing is our number one, period. We've been able to come down from roughly a 10 and 1/2% vacancy rate to a little less than an 8%, and I'm back up to just right at 8.5. And those are the people that are doing the work that we find out when it's not, just because we don't have enough staff. That's the calls we get, and it's just not taking care of our community. I want to take care of the people we have, and I want to make it more possible to reduce that vacancy rate. We started to look through capital. My concern with that, you can always pull capital down, but what you're doing is then injecting a one-time piece of money. You're basically funding your everyday expense out of your savings account, and you can't win doing that. So we looked at both of those pretty closely.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Atkinson on these slides?
Mr. Atkinson?
Ms. Joy.
The rate that we had on our previous slides during budget sessions?
It was 48.3230.
And as I understand it, if we, should we adopt that no new revenue rate, then we could not come back later and go above that rate, is that correct?
That is. So today's action, not in our work session, but on your council agenda, is to propose a maximum not to exceed.
That's right.
Tax rate.
Yes.
That is the number that you can't come back and go over.
Good. Okay, thank you.
And just let me clarify, Mr. Atkinson, that's a really good point Ms. Joy brought up. Today's action, when we get into our regular agenda, and just to be clear to the public, if we adopt a ceiling, using that word loosely, of .488963, that doesn't mean that's what the rate is today.
That is correct.
That's what we will do on September 6th when we come back. We will actually have comments on the budget, and then we will actually make a vote on that date, correct?
That is correct.
So just for the council to understand and everyone to understand, what we do here today is just adopting a ceiling, and then we can always look at the floor.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any other questions on these slides of Mr. Atkinson? All right, Dr. Wilson.
Mr. Atkinson, the proposed list of where we're looking at all these slight decreases, it is true that nothing here, other than uncertainty year after year about what sales tax is going to do, will affect core services to our citizens.
That is correct. This is not taking away anything that we're doing today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Do we have any other questions at this time? Specific questions as it will relate to what we will get into later at 7.3 in our regular agenda? Does anybody have any other questions on general fund, debt service, internal services, any other fund questions for Mr. Atkinson at this time? Ms. Joy.
This may be a question for Police Department. Do I see Chief Mitchell or?
I believe Assistant Chief Baron is representing.
I was, these were some notes I made when y'all gave your presentation, and we were kind of encouraged to not ask you a lot of questions because we had so much to cover. What rank among police officers do you lose the most?
Between the five and seven year, if you discount the ones that leave early on in the process, like in the, during the academy and during the FTO processes.
Which steps are those? Can you call those off the top of your head?
I believe that's B, A or B or C. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, the follow-up question is, are they leaving because of pay or in that group? Because that's the largest group of your officers, correct?
Right, we have a lot of young officers, yes.
I think I, the information I looked at, what, 200, 300 officers in that group? Would that be about right?
Yes, there's quite a few.
And so I was curious, we talked about pay increases, and we talked about retaining officers, but are we putting our money in the right places?
Right, that's the group that is not as committed to Lubbock. They haven't been here, unless they're from here, they haven't been here as long, and so it's much easier for them to leave to another department.
But is it because of pay?
It's for a variety of reasons. I can't speak to all of them being for pay, but it's, it definitely contributes.
I guess I'm just wondering, are we fixing the problem with the increases that we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. I think we're taking some great strides towards that, yes.
In that particular group?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we have anybody here from City Bus?
You can call Mr. Howerton if you would like, Mayor.
He was trying to scoot down. We didn't spend much time on talking about City Bus, but we know that there's two pieces to funding City Bus.
Yes, ma'am.
LEDA or Market Lubbock, one of the two.
Market Lubbock and General Fund.
And General Fund are the two sources of funding, and we've been, I guess, fortunate because we've had some ARPA funds, some CARESAC funds. But my concern is how do we keep doing this? You know, everybody's wanting to talk about, you know, lowering the rates, that sort of thing. At some point, we've spent more money than this from the General Fund or City Bus in the past.
Absolutely.
What's the highest you remember? That's okay if you don't.
3.2, 3.5 in that area.
And so this year, it's not that high because of different reasons, but I guess going forward, if we're going to be in the transportation, public transportation business, can we rely upon what we're funding this year to be good for future years?
And as we started using the ARPA funding to take up some of the losses that we were seeing with City Bus, we had always said that eventually it would go back to the same levels as before.
And the most you recall was over $3 million?
That's what I remember off the top of my head, but.
That concerns me.
Yes, ma'am.
Civic center debt, when does that pay out? Does anybody know? There's not a lot left on it.
It should be wiped at approximately 2029.
2029, okay.
Well, we can get you the exact answer.
And that stormwater debt rolls off from, the stormwater debt that was incurred by putting street maintenance into the debt, when does that roll off? Mr. Kuselit, you look like you have an answer.
The street maintenance, ma'am, is rolling off this year, so it's not in next year's budget.
Okay.
And the civic center debt is 2030.
2030, thank you. And so stormwater, we didn't increase any rates.
No, ma'am.
They've stayed constant. But I guess that doesn't mean we don't have expenses in stormwater. Would that be accurate?
That's accurate. We still have a lot of operations and maintenance expenses that have to fund that entire operation, so it's not just a debt service model, it's, or a debt service fund, it's an actual operating fund.
And do we have some projects in capital for stormwater going forward?
We do, in the next year and the planning five years out, we do have some cash-funded and some debt finance projects.
Okay. Okay, thank you. There are two issues that have kind of kept me awake a little bit. One of them is on our health insurance for our employees. I think there was a statement made, we can't continue at what's being paid by the employees with the insurance going forward. And so what I would like to see is to the city manager and to staff, we need to start looking at that, and what are the options, what are the alternatives without hurting anyone? I understand that some of our lower-paid employees cannot afford huge increases, for sure. So I would like for us to look at that. Before we get into budget next year, let's be working on that this year. The second one is police. I very much want the juvenile curfew extended, and I want us as a community and as a police department to find a solution when we pick up juveniles who are out past curfew. What do you do with them? In years past, many years past, I gather, there was a place that they could take the juveniles so that they could keep them until they could find their parents or grandparents or somebody. We no longer have that, but we do have three patrol divisions, and I think there is a way, and I want Police Chief in the department to take a look at that. I do not like to pick up the paper and read about 15, 16, and 17-year-olds shooting each other. And part of that is because they're on the streets at hours that they should not be. So very much want to. give some direction to the police and, and to the city manager that we need to take a hard look at making sure that we have a curfew for those juveniles and that we have a way to get them back to their homes safely.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. And I, and I do think again, in looking forward to the fall, we had discussed strategic planning, what we will look to for priorities next year from the council, for everyone to be thinking about those. As we come into the first part of October, that will be an absolute necessity. And I, and I think those are all good points, City Bus, insurance, some curfew, as I believe expires, that ordinance expires end of October. So we'll need to address that. And in, Mr. Costelich, I think we had discussed also looking at where we have some of these other vacant positions to where we can look at those. Do we need to fill them or increase pay to make them more viable to people? There's just, there's things like that we'll look at in the fall. So thank you for bringing those to our attention, Ms. Joy. Does anybody have any other questions of Mr. Atkinson on, on these specific slides? I think we're moving to Mr. Costelich next, is that correct? Or am I incorrect in that? So that's it?
This, this was the presentation. We do have the full executive summary that we looked at last week loaded. It's been adjusted. We can show that, Mayor, or take questions, or however you may see fit.
Mr. Massengill?
Mayor, if you don't mind, Mr. Atkinson, could you remind us what our schedule is on the budget from this point forward?
Certainly, it's an excellent question. Today, we've got this work session and you have the one action item on your agenda. Again, that's the maximum not to exceed or the ceiling tax rate. You make that proposal today. We move forward then to September the 6th. September the 6th is your call meeting. That is the period of time in which we'll have the public hearings and the first sets of action actually on the budget and the tax rate. Follow that up at your next regular meeting and you can have the budget and the tax rate both finally adopted. Not part of this action, but note at your next regular council meeting, that is when the public improvement districts will all come. But they stand on their own and you will consider them at that point. They're not part of your tax rate, not part of your operating budget.
All right, any further questions at this time? For anyone in the crowd? Anyone? All right, at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. When we are completed with our executive session, we will come back in and begin our regular agenda. This time, we are in recess to executive session. Now 3:33 and we have adjourned from executive session and we will be in recess until 3:45 where we will take up the regular agenda. Thank you, we are in recess. Okay, welcome back. It is now 3:52 and we will move in to our formal session. At this time, we have Executive Pastor Brian Brownlow with the Lakewood United Methodist Church here to begin our meeting with prayer. Come on forward, Mr. Brownlow. It's good to see you, sir.
Will you please bow at me? Father, we thank you. We thank you for your goodness. Most of all, we thank you for the salvation that comes through Jesus Christ. I pray your blessing on the men and women that you've called to lead this, this council, to lead this community. I thank you for the gifts and graces that you poured into their lives. I pray that they would be blessed in all that they do. And most of all, we pray that they would have your mind, that they would be of one mind, that they would reach a consensus. It wouldn't be in any individual's consensus, but it would be one that would be pleasing to you. Be kingdom building, that you would bless this community, all that we do here and then what happens in this council and throughout this community is pleasing in your sight. That you'd bless the citizens, you would keep us safe. You would help us to see and to live into the greatest commandment that you've given us and that's to love our neighbor, to love you with all our heart, soul, mind, and body, and to love our neighbor as ourselves. Father, that's our, our prayer. We need you to be able to do that. We pray that you would help us, guide us, strengthen us, and put us on that path. We pray this in the power and the confidence that always comes when we call on the name of Jesus. Amen.
You will please join me in the pledge of the United States and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will have citizen comments. According to Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the City Council regarding any matter on the agenda, shall be able to come forward and give a comment. And this afternoon, we have one signed up for citizen comment. That is Mr. George Hardburger. I know Mr. Hardburger knows, but I'll remind him that you will have three minutes. And if you will please give your name and your address.
I'll be much shorter than three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
My name's George Hardburger. I live at 1602 Texas Avenue. And I sort of mistakenly signed up for citizen's comments. I really just wanted the ability to say a few words about an annexation request, which is later in the agenda. And I'd be happy to come back at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 5. We have minutes, June 21st of 2022, City Council meeting with the Electric Utility Board, as well as July 12th, the regular City Council meeting. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes under 5.1?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign. We have none, that motion carries 7-0. All right, we will now move on to the consent agenda. In consent, we have Items 6.1 through 6.22. We will briefly pull out Agenda Item 6.1 for some questions and comments and then we will pull the remaining items back in for one vote, if that's the approval of council. So we'll begin with 6.1, which is Budget Ordinance Amendment on a second reading to consider the ordinance respecting the Central Business District TIF Capital Fund to appropriate additional funding for the capital improvement project. Mr. Atkinson, could you give us a brief instruction on Item 6.1 and then we'll entertain questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 6.1 is the second and final reading of a budget amendment. Council will really pleased with this and really want to extend our appreciation to the Helen Jones Foundation. So what you have before you is accepting the next $500,000 from the Helen Jones Foundation specifically targeted for the downtown civic parks. So council, this continues those efforts to have private funds build that park. And you see the Helen Jones Foundation doing so now. Council, with acceptance of this, this will take the total received from them from 1 million to 1.5 million. Be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. McBrier?
Mr. Atkinson, what is the goal for the private funding for that part? Do they have a goal?
They do, and I'm going to be close, but probably not exact. The initial estimates for Phase 1 construction were approximately $7.5 million.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
And just a reminder that none of the monies that are being used are coming from the city of Lubbock. Is that correct?
That is correct. The initial efforts in the demolition were paid for by your Central Business District Tax Increment Financing TIF. There have been no general fund dollars put to this.
And it won't be put to this, right? Is that what I understand?
There are no general fund dollars designed to go to this. That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Atkinson. All right, if there's no other questions on 6.1, at this time, I will move, request a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 6.1 through 6.22. Thank you, Mr. McBrier. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All, and is there any further discussion on 6.1 or any of these items? All right. All in favor of approval of Consent Agenda Item 6.1 through 6.22, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign? All right, motion to approve 6.1 through 6.22 carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to the regular agenda items, which begins at 7.1. 7.1 has a motion, has a second reading to consider a request of Home Depot for a zone change from commercial C4 to specific use. I think we have some questions specifically on Item 7.1. Is there a specific motion on Item, Agenda Item 7.1 from council regarding a postponement of Agenda Item 7.1?
Mayor, I'd like to move to postpone Item 7.1 at least for two weeks until our next regular city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Agenda Item 7.1 before we consider moving to August 23rd of 2022? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Didn't have a question.
All right, all in favor of moving and postponing Agenda Item 7.1 from today's second reading to August 23rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign? All right, motion to postpone carries 7-0. We will notify the parties that that has been moved to August 23rd on the regular agenda. All right, that moves us next to Agenda Item 7.2. This is Consider Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Services Agreement with Lone Oaks Home LC for an annexation of 144 acres south of East 82nd and west of MLK into Lubbock's corporate limits, along with the adjacent right-of-way. Ms. Sager, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Afternoon, I should say. And as you stated, this is a municipal service plan agreement or annexation agreement for a proposed annexation of approximately 144 acres located south of East 82nd Street, west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. If council approves the annexation agreement tonight, to which the owners have agreed to, we will then schedule a public hearing at the September 13th regular council meeting for consideration of annexation of the property. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Sager on Agenda Item 7.2? We also have Mr. Hardburger here, I believe, as well. Thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, I could have a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.2? Thank you, ladies. Is there any further discussion on Agenda Item 7.2? Yes, Ms. Patterson-Harris? All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign? Our motion to approve 7.2 carries 7-0. All right, Agenda Item 7.3. It's a resolution adopting a proposed tax rate. As we discussed earlier in work session, and I think Mr. Costelich will reemphasize, this is only to establish what we would look at as a ceiling. It would not go above that rate at this time. And then we will consider that at our September 6th official hearing. Take it away, Mr. Costelich.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mayor, you're correct, this is not establishing a tax rate today. Any action that you take is merely setting a, a maximum tax rate. It's a ceiling that this legislative body cannot exceed when we actually adopt our true property tax rate for fiscal year '23. You can always adopt something less, but, but not greater. So right now, what we have proposed in the budget, the budget that we built, the budget that we presented during the budget workshops, is a tax rate of 48.3230 cents. That overall is a four-cent reduction over the prior year. And of the 3.5% maintenance and operations allowable tax rate increase by SB 2, by law, this is taking 2.31% of that. All right, updates are available, okay. That is, that is not in the budget. So let's stay required language on this. The, the revenue year-over-year increase, this budget will raise more property taxes than last year's budget by $4.7 million or 4.87%. And of that amount, 2.9, almost 3 million, is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the roll this year. The, the tax rates that you see, the no new revenue, voter approval, unused increment, voter approval, tax rate with unused increment, are all calculated by the Lubbock Central Appraisal District based upon the certified values of the city of Lubbock as a whole. So the proposed rate, like we said, is 48.3230 cents. Mayor and Council, as we said, that, that increase of 4.7 million, we have graphically here how that's broken down between the different entities, where those funds flow, and the difference between existing property and new property. This has not changed from what we presented during the budget workshops. And the effect on an average home, like we said, there's a 13.2% single-family residence taxable value increase from your fiscal year '22 over to fiscal year '23. That, along with this decrease, will increase a, a single-family, the average single-family residence by $40.07 on their, on their tax bill for the year. Because of that 13.2% increase, you're going to see the appraisal growth aspect of that was $116.50 year-over-year increase. With the four-cent tax rate decrease, we offset 76.43, $76.43. So Mayor and Council, from where we go from here, like we said, any action today is establishing nothing more than the maximum tax rate that we can, we can actually adopt for the fiscal year '23. So that's the August 9th, 2022 action. At the August 23rd, special, our regular city council meeting, there's no formal city council action on the budget itself. Always the, the potential to come back and, and talk about more in a work session. But on September 6th, if we, if we adopt anything over the no new revenue tax rate, we will have our first tax rate public hearing, along with the budget public hearing, first readings of your budget ordinance and your tax rate ordinance. And then we'll come back a week later, September 13th, for the second reading of the budget ordinance, second reading of the tax rate ordinance, budget ratification resolution, and we'll also talk about hotel tax resolution. Mayor and Council, with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions of Mr. Costelich? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, at this time, under 7.3, all in favor, or let's, let me, before I get to a vote, I better have a motion, thank you. Do I have a motion to consider? Do I have a motion to consider .483230 as our proposed tax rate?
Need to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve .483230. Is there any discussion at this time on the adoption of that as our proposed tax rate? All right. All in favor of approval of .483230 as the proposed tax rate at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion to approve 7.3 carries 7-0. The city council will hold the public hearing on the proposed 2022 tax rate Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. That was a date that that will be a public hearing for any citizens to step forward and make comments. City council meeting that will be held at City Council Chambers at 1314 Avenue K, beginning at 5:30 PM for that public hearing. City council will vote on the first reading of the tax rate ordinance at that September 6th meeting, will be held again at City Council Chambers, 1314 Avenue K, beginning at 5:30 PM. And the city council will vote on the second and final reading of the tax rate ordinance at the September 13th, 2022 city council meeting that will be held in the City Council Chambers at 1314 Avenue K. That meeting will begin at 2 PM. All right, next we will address agenda item 7.4. This is a resolution of Lubbock Power and Light. Discussion execution of ERCOT and certain intent for us to opt-in to the retail competition. Take it away.
Mr. Mayor, Council, how y'all doing? We're bringing before you now our notice of intent to enter the electric retail market with ERCOT. This is just a formal notice to ERCOT. ERCOT knows we're coming. It's kind of been an exciting, busy time, and this is the culmination, not really culmination, but this is six, seven years in the process since 2015, and this will probably be the official final push across the line. With the submission of this letter, we're officially notifying them. We have a minimum of 12-month notice, and our timeline of next fall, this is a prudent time to do it. This is just the first step in our final checkoff.
I'm going to get to interrupt you just one second. Would you please state your name for the record and for all those that are hearing the presentation?
I would love to do that.
That'd be great. The jury would like to know.
My name is Michael Weingart, and I'm a city employee with Lubbock Power and Light. Should I start over?
No.
Okay, we're all caught up.
We're caught up.
All right. Again, they know we're coming. We've already had several meetings with them, and those will continue through the next year, 15 months. We just really want to make sure that we're a unified front as a city of Lubbock. That's why we're bringing this before you guys. We bought it to EUB last month, and here we are before you. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Would you just briefly, I know this is passed through your board, would you briefly just give us a timeline of what we know? I know there's going to be subject to change, but as we look at the notices provided today, what are the next steps on your end? I mean, we notify them, we inform them of the opt-in, and give us just a brief general overview, what happens next?
Okay, do my best. If I need help, I'm going to call in from the bench. Right now, we, upcoming, we're working on our pro forma tariff and all the rules that we will be embarking in utilizing or staying falling under as we enter the market. That'll be happening this fall. We still have construction to bring the last of the 30% of our customers over. That'll be, it's ongoing, it's been happening, and we'll be going through the spring. This fall, we'll also be doing, we'll be selecting our polar provider of last resort, and that will likely come to you guys, I think. We'll also be selecting our voluntary retail electric providers that, for the customers that don't pick anybody, those will be the ones that will do that. So that's all happening this fall, along with various customer service process changes. Make sure our system testing, that's coming late Q1, early Q2 of next year. Customers, citizens will be able to pick their providers summer of next year, and then shortly thereafter, after we go through everything we need to do, it'll be retail market in the fall. Yeah, that 30% will be happening in that May-June timeframe.
So fall, October, November, we look to be completely moved over at that point, or is that the goal?
That is the goal. We will be moving each customer, each group of customers according to their billing cycle over, you know, a few-week period.
Okay, all right.
We have 109,000 meters to move over, so it's going to take a minute.
Ms. Joy.
What is a tariff?
What is the tariff? Man, that's a great question.
What is it? I know, and people don't know.
The tariff is our, yeah, our rate structure, the rules that we have to abide by, that we accrue to the Public Utility Commission.
Good job, man, thank you. Joel Ivey, Lubbock Power and Light. So our tariff basically houses the terms and conditions of doing business with Lake Electric, and it can include our rates that go along with that. So we establish what our operating voltages are, for example, our line extension policies, to the extent we need to build new lines out to serve customers and whatnot, that's contained in there as well.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you.
Ms. Martinez Garcia.
In terms, this is probably a Matt question, but just in terms of customers, how are we doing, getting the word out? Because I think that's still really important.
That's a Matt question.
So we're already out there, obviously, with media, social media, all your traditional avenues, talking about what's to come. I've been out there talking to various different civic groups, and I have a bunch lined up over the next 60 to 90 days. Really, starting in, probably right after Labor Day, is when this campaign will officially kick off. You know, one of the things we did early on was we said, we want to let people know what this is in a general sense, but we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves and scare folks into thinking that they have to do something immediately. Because as Michael said, they don't officially have to do anything until about a year from now. And so by the time we get to that point, we will have had town halls, kind of open workshops. We'll have a period of time, I don't know if it was mentioned, where reps will register. And so when we get in that process, we can start having these workshops where folks can go speak directly with those that may serve them, you know, and start that process. We're also going to be putting together what I've kind of called a buyer's guide, but it's one unified document that tells you how to shop, where to go, what to look for, and more importantly, what to avoid. A lot of that's already in the PUC manual, and we're taking a lot of that official language from the PUC to put into that. So it'll really begin this next month and build over the next 12 months. But it's going to be crucial, especially as we go through the spring and summer months, that, for example, district meetings that y'all have, any opportunity we have to go talk, because, as I've said a lot, we're going to try to reach 100% of folks, but at the end of the day, you're not going to catch everybody, but we're going to try every way that we can to. And at the end of the day, that's going to include probably direct mailers and various different things like that as well.
I've got a town hall meeting coming, so I'd like for you to be there.
I know, I've heard that there's three Mondays in a row, so I think my schedule's set for the next.
On that manual, is it bilingual?
Yes, it will be. Everything that we're creating will be in English and Spanish, for sure. And then as much other groups that we can incorporate into this, we'll do so.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Ms. Patterson Harris?
Before you leave, may I say to invite you to my meeting?
I was just going to come, is that okay? Please?
I'm just saying.
I will go to hers.
I'll give you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, do I have a motion to approve agenda item 7.4?
Need to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, thank you, Ms. Dr. Wilson. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on 7.4? All right, all those in favor of approval of resolution 7.4, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.4 carries 7-0. That, thank you, Mike, Joel, and Matt, appreciate you very much. I think someone's coming back. We'll next move to 7.5, which is a single reading, considering an ordinance provided for the issuance of City of Lubbock Electric Light and Power System Revenue Bonds. Mr. Harvey?
Okay.
I will turn it over to you, sir.
All right, my name's Harvey Hall, I'm with the Lubbock Power and Light, CFO, and I'm here to ask for something to help make 7.4 a reality, and that is to ask for the funds to support two critical projects, and that's going to be in one parameter's ordinance, and that's going to be to ask for up to $160 million to facilitate, up to $70 million for the, to get the 30% integration of our electric system integrated into ERCOT, and then the second part would be for an up-to $90 million bond series for 2023, pending Texas PUC approval and FERC approval, and that is to, for the settlements payments for our partial requirements agreement with SPS, and that's for $77.5 million that we would pay on June 15th next year. Those two steps are quite critical to make 7.4 happen. And then an additional part would be to terminate the revolving note program that we have with Bank of America. We think, we need that terminated, as we elected to go straight to bonds rather than go through the, go through the bond, rather than go through the note program. And with that, I would like to ask Matt Bowles to come up, and, I think, let's see which one it is.
There you go, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Harvey. Good afternoon, my name is Matt Bowles, I'm with RBC Capital Markets, and I know to tell you who I am every time I step up here now, so I appreciate that. Mayor and Council, it's good to be here today. We were last here in June to talk about two financings, one of which will happen pretty quickly with your action tonight, should that be your choosing. And we'll talk about the second, which is to come next April in just a little bit, but before we do that, I wanted to give you a brief overview of the marketplace, because as we talked about last time, things change rapidly, and we've seen some rapid change in that respect, one of which is, we had a jobs report last week that was right at two times what the world expected to see, and so that sent some tremors and indecision into the marketplace, most of which, though, was reflected in equities and in the US government market, but not in the US municipal market, so we are fortunate in that respect. You know, most of this discussion about a recession or not a recession, growth, no growth, is all a matter of being reflected in what they think the Fed is going to do. And just to remind you, the Fed's ability to control the market right now, as they perceive it, is really on the short end of the yield curve, so zero to six months is really where you see that reflection. The balance of the curve moves with supply and demand, geopolitical issues, things that are really outside of the control of the Fed, so long as they're not buying bonds in the open market, and they're not doing that anymore. We have in the top left-hand corner on this particular page what we think, and what the world thinks, the probability of rate hikes from the Fed will be, and that does change. Just this morning, I was listening to CNBC talk about the possibility of another three-quarters of a point rate hike at the next meeting. There's some probability of that, although it's not tremendously high at this point in time. So what we have reflected here is what we think will be the case, and again, we don't think that will ripple into the muni market specifically to this financing that we're going to do this week, and hopefully, as we talk about the one next April. We've got a rate forecast here, I've spoken to a good portion of that in the previous page with respect to what we think Fed action will be. The 10-year right now is at a 2.77, it traded as high as over 3% last week when the jobs report came out, so it's amazing and resilient all at the same time. And again, the muni market didn't react as strongly. And that is shown here on page six in the upper right-hand corner. This is my Dow Jones, this is municipal market data, so there's three municipal bond curves here, one of which is the purple line, which is the historic 15-year average. The light-shaded blue line is the all-time, or the all-time low, which we struck during the pandemic, and then the green line is where we sit now. So all in all, not near on a long-term basis where the 15-year average is, but certainly well off the lows of the pandemic. And again, our market seems to be operating in a way that's incredibly thirsty for credits like Lubbock Power and Light, and I'll talk about that in a little bit whenever we get into the ratings and the process, but I think looking good right now. And just to remind you, and this is just for those who are watching and hear and see and read about rate policy and the economy, just to remind you where we stand from a historical perspective, I love this one. This is the Bond by Our Index, it's another well-tracked index, one that I follow weekly. This goes all the way back to the 1960s, and you can see that 91% of the time, rates have been higher than they are today. So we're still in a very, very good rate environment. It's a great time, if you're going to be a borrower, to be in the marketplace. We don't see any reason for you all not to move forward if, from a policy standpoint, that's what you want to do. This has lots on this page. These are the plan assumptions for the financing that we're going to carry out this week. We do speak to the financing that will be done next April to finance the termination payment to SPS. This particular financing, however, is approximately $60 million to facilitate project funds for capital expenditures to finish the very project that was spoken to in 7.4 on your agenda. Additionally, we'll be terminating the 2021 note program with B of A. I've spoken about that several times in front of the council, but just to remind you, that's a note program that was installed for Lubbock Power and Light to facilitate their ERCOT capital expenditures, and just really worked out quite well. Now, the pandemic certainly played into that unfortunately, but the rate market treated this program very, very favorably, and at one point, I think we were looking at somewhere between $7 and $8 million in interest savings over what we had projected whenever we entered that program. So we'll be terminating that program now that we're in a higher rate market, and we'll be long-term financing these assets in what we think is a really good rate market right now. So the rest of this speaks to the bonds, and that is on the fifth bullet point there. I'll go through your ratings in just a little bit, but they will be sold with ratings of A1, A, and A+ by Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch, respectively. We probably will be in the market to price the bonds this Thursday. There is an outside chance that if we come in tomorrow morning, and the council does move tonight, and we've got a robust market, that we'll try to get in the market tomorrow, but the plan is to get into the market Thursday. Both series of these bonds do have 10-year par calls. We looked at a shorter call on this one, but we're going to stick with the 10-year par call. So you do have the chance to refinance these in lower-rate environments as you move forward. And we will be, it looks like, using bond insurance on a portion, at least a portion of the transaction that we're going to do this week. And let me explain that very quickly. There's really two third-party bond insurance companies that will step in and ensure the debt service payments on the transaction, but it has to be economical, and the premiums for that insurance have to be sustainable by the financing. And so there's an analysis that we do, and it literally goes right down to the moment of setting the rates on the bonds whereby we determine whether or not it's worth paying that premium or not. And so that is under consideration, and as I stand here now, I think we'll utilize part of that, or at least some of that, on part of the transaction that we're looking to price this week. This is just a listing of the players in the financing. Jerry Kyle with Oric, your bond counsel is here tonight and available to answer any questions as it relates to 7.5. Your senior manager will be Jeffries, there's two co-managers, Raymond James and Seibert. And again, the, I think I said 60 million, the maximum principal amount that you all authorize was 70 million, the transaction will approximate 60 million to the project fund. And so this is just the parameters at the bottom of the page that are part of the resolution that are in front of you today. And then on a preliminary basis, and these numbers were run in July, and I didn't want to change them to current market so that there was inconsistency between what we're going to price tomorrow and on July 26th, but if you look in the middle portion of the page, the statistical data, we've highlighted a couple of key elements there, the all-in true interest cost, so think of this as the APR, this includes all the costs of issuance, the rates, on a present value basis is projected to be 3.7. On a present value basis, it's projected to be 3.75%. Again, our job as your financial advisor with an underwriting desk of our own is to make sure that we press the underwriters on that and make sure that you're getting a market rate of interest, if not better. And so we'll be working hard to make sure that's the case this week. Outside of that, you've got your debt service payments on a projected basis on the right-hand side of the page. Hasn't changed all that much since we last spoke. And then this is just a sneak peek at the Series 23 transaction. Keep in mind that this has 100 basis points, so 1% of cushion. There's a lot of time between now and April, and the market can do all sorts of funny things, and we wanted to provide some conservatism there. So net of that 100 basis point cushion, the financing would be 3.4% or so, and we'll continue to update that as we get closer to that point in time. And then finally, we went through an exhaustive credit analysis and credit rating process with your staff at LPNL and the city, and attained ratings by Moody's of A1, S&amp;P of A, and Fitch of A+. Moody's and Fitch affirmed their previous ratings. S&amp;P made an adjustment. The adjustment was from A+ to A. They maintain a negative outlook, and we just hit this straight on in this text here, and I'm glad to talk more about this. The fact of the matter is they see the world differently than the other two, and that's why we diversify our rating schemes. We always want to have more to one representative at the table whenever we're talking about ratings. The A rating for S&amp;P falls right in the middle of their A category, so it's a very strong rating. It's a very reputable firm, and I'm not here to criticize that. But to say that because the utility and because the city has a very conservative rate model without escalators as we move forward, I believe you get penalized for that. And I think if, you know, and it's funny, because it's not funny, actually, it's ironic. The other two don't see it that way. They love the conservatism. But we will continue to work at that. One thing that we did get out of the analysts and the committee was that, you know, easy to go down, hard to come up, that's the word when they, that's the phrase in the rating game. And we made them aware of the fact that in 18 months, we're going to ask them to review this, because you will then be through the biggest bulk of the financial strain, if there is any, to come out of this integration into ERCOT. And I have to say that your staff, both from the city and the utility, did an incredible job of hitting these issues head-on with all three agencies. They were very well-versed in the plan and a very cohesive team. I was grateful to see the work that they did around this. So that's how these games are played, and I think it still sets up to be a very, very nice transaction. Again, these are all A ratings by the three reputable credit rating agencies, and we will do just fine. But I wanted to hit that head-on. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and the council for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bowles? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. We'll have a motion on Agenda Item 7.5.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right. 7.5 carries 70. All right. Looks like that takes us through our regular agenda items. We will convene at 5:30 PM in open session for discussion regarding the Citizens Advisory Committee recommendation on the street and roadway construction repair needs, including discussion concerning the possible bond election. Mr. Weaver, is that a recess, or will we go ahead and?
We'll adjourn.
We'll adjourn and begin again. All right. So it is 4:33 on August night, and we are adjourned.